Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I'd like to begin by welcoming Dr. Cash for his first regular board meeting after having been appointed our new superintendent. You had the delight of having a very brief special meeting with us, but this is your first full, such as it is. This one may be a little shorter than usual, too, but our first regular agenda meeting, so, welcome.
Thank you.
We also have our translator here, so if you would like to come to the podium and introduce yourself, thank you.
Buenas noches and bienvenidos to part of la junta directiva, district escolar de Santa Barbara. If there is anyone who needs an interpreter, please lift your hand to give them an audifono. Gracias. My name is Vivian Rodriguez. Thank you.
Gracias. Okay, thank you very much. We also have hearing headsets for the hearing impaired, as noted on our screen, and that brings us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognition. So are there any of those tonight? Doesn't look like it.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there are?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'd like to introduce our new special ed director, Deb Lozara, who came to us from San Slough County Office of Education, where she was responsible for autism and related programs. Prior to that, she was a program specialist in Turlak. She is a behavior analyst and has extensive experience working with special education staff, students, and families. She started on the first day, like I did, July 1st, and she oversees special education needs in our secondary schools. We'd like to welcome Deb and ask her to say a few words.
This is such a small group.
Well, unfortunately, for the TV audience, we need to have you at the podium. We want you to get all of your credit that you deserve here.
Well, thank you, and thank you for that introduction, Dr. Cash, and I just want to say that I'm really excited about being here, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve Santa Barbara Unified in this capacity. And I'm just thrilled to be a member of Dr. Mills' special education team just in a week's time. I feel like I've learned so much about what you do here and all the good things you do for the special needs students in the district and their families as well. So I'm looking forward to continuing that good work and hopefully to be a valuable participant in the goal of continuing to develop our programs and improve our programs to serve those kids and their families. So, thank you. I'm happy to be here and very excited for what's to come.
Well, thank you very much, and we are happy to have you and hope to, and we would say ditto, we're excited to have you do all those things as well. So, we are looking forward to it, and we are thrilled to have you onboard. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Well, while it is my first meeting, I think there's a much more historic occasion that needs to be noted, and that's, this is the first meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and that is really historic. As I said earlier last month, I think it's a really symbolic moment in time in the over 140-year history of our schools in Santa Barbara, that we are unified in name, not just in the action, but also in name, and I think that's wonderful. I also want to let you know that our school year starts this Thursday for our two year-round schools, at Cleveland Elementary School and the Santa Barbara Community Academy. I'm going to be at the Santa Barbara Community Academy on Thursday and Cleveland on Friday to welcome the students along with their staff, and I'm looking forward to being there. As you know, we currently have a vacancy at our Santa Barbara Community Academy. We're very fortunate, we have Nancy Minas and Tim Cures, former academy principals, and I've known Nancy for a long time. They're stepping in to help sustain the leadership and take up some of the responsibilities until we find a full-time replacement. All the rest of our schools will start on August 25th, so they get over a month head start on the rest of us. We are in the process of staffing all our schools, and that's a complex process, especially in times in which we're cutting budgets. We're working hard under the direction of Eric and Robin and Ann in ensuring that all of our schools are adequately staffed and staffed according to the number of students that will be attending those schools. Happy to report that our LEAP, our local education agency plan, was reviewed by the CDE, and we're in process of working with them on some minor revisions. That plan is required by our local agencies, as you know, as a result of No Child Left Behind. I understand, I wasn't here, that the Professional Development Week, which took place last month, was a rousing success with over 120, 244 teachers participating, which is really fantastic. One of the things that the teachers did was learn how to use an iPad as an instructional tool. They got, I see we have some iPads up here on the dais, that's wonderful. They had an opportunity to learn more about how to implement READ 180. Kindergarten had some foundational science training. Abbott instructional strategies were also part of the Professional Development Week, as well as something I think is really important for all of us, and that's brain research, was shared on how students learn. I think that's fantastic. Approximately 30 administrators, excuse me, attended the Model Schools Conference under the direction of Robin Swawsky in Nashville, and leadership teams from our three high schools, as well as Adams and McKinley Elementary Schools, attended the conference. And you're going to hear a lot more about the work from the Model Schools Conference. I've talked to all three high school principals about their experience there, and they all came back very excited about what they've learned and how they can implement some of the great things happening at high schools across our nation and our local high schools here. So, you'll also be hearing in the coming weeks and months, a lot of information about the Common Core and how Santa Barbara schools are working to implement that and be ready for the full implementation of the Common Core in the state of California. I'm happy to report that under the direction of Davis Hayton, we're working hard to get our wireless access at our schools, and I understand that Dos Pueblos and possibly one other school will be completely ready to go by the first day of school for this year, which, you know, you talk to any of our students and they would say, "It's about time we did that." So I'm happy that we're working on that. It's my understanding that we will be wireless by all of our schools by next summer.
The end.
The end of next summer, all right. So, one of the things that continues to be problematic, not just for Santa Barbara schools, but for schools up all up and down the state, is getting the T-vaccinations done for our students in grades seven through 12. And we've got a lot of ideas about how we're going to try to ensure that. I'm happy to report that there's a new bill that's working its way through the legislature that's going to give us a 30-day window, kind of erasing the have-to-have-it-done-on-the-first-day-of-school requirement, but we're going to pretend that that isn't going to happen, and we're going to work hard to get everybody done before school starts. So, Barbara Kiani, Marlin, are working with local vendors and some local, maybe a nonprofit, to help us provide some way in which we can ensure every student gets the opportunity to get those vaccinations and therefore is eligible to come to school on the first day. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and I echo your celebration of our new name and the historic sort of nature of this meeting with our new district being unified, so, thank you. Any board comments or correspondence? No? Okay, we can move on. Announcements from closed session action, there, we took no action to report. Are there any public comments at this time?
No, we have no public comments this evening.
Well, we are just zipping right through our agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Historic.
It's because Dr. Cash is here, we're trying to impress him. Are there any items to pull?
Eric needs to pull something from.
Oh, okay.
He needs to pull something off of D-5.
That's correct. Just one item on page two of D-5, and I'm not going to use names, I'm going to use titles here.
Okay.
So if you go down to the, I don't know, fourth, fifth, sixth box, hourly employment classified, where it says catering coordinator, we had an inadvertent clerical error, and somehow that got on there when it shouldn't have, so we could remove that.
Well, that's been pulled off.
Exactly.
Okay. And is that the only one that's getting removed?
That's the only one.
Okay, so we'll leave the item there, we'll just remove that name. And then Ms. Deacon, you had something you wanted to pull?
Oh, I wanted to pull two things. In light of our historic renaming, I would like to pull D-9 so that we could actually vote on it separately, and maybe we could even do that right off the bat. I also would like to pull D-2.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
I'd like to pull D-13 and D-15.
Any others? Ms. Herron?
Not pulling, but I'd like to make a comment on D-5.
Okay.
And I know how wonderful Deborah will be and is, but there is a clerical mistake on that salary number, and I wish you got that much, I know. But the actual number is something like 117,164 base, and then there's benefits on top of that, which takes the total to about 140, I've got it here someplace, 146. So, just to point out that little change. And then, I just had one basic question for Mr. Hetjunk on D-15, D-16, and D-17, all relating to architectural work, and the fee is 11 and 1/2 percent times the estimated cost. Do we feel confident in those estimated numbers, and if they're not correct, does the fee go up or down based upon what it actually is?
We feel semi-confident in that we haven't built a restroom for a while, so we used a square footage multiplier and then added on the site work on top of that. The fee is 11 and 1/2 percent of the final construction amount, so at the end of the project, that will be reconciled. So the architect is paid exactly that amount. If he was paid a little bit more or a little bit less when we get the final billing, that's adjusted. So it'll be actually 11 and 1/2 percent of the actual completed contract amount that you typically see in a notice of completion.
Of some uncertain amount. 11 and 1/2 percent of some uncertain.
Hopefully, it's very close to the estimate.
Thank you.
Okay, then we can go ahead and vote on the consent agenda with the couple of revisions to item D-5 and eliminating the items that we've pulled for later consideration.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0. And I'd like to take Ms. Deacon up on her suggestion that we perhaps move immediately to item D-9, given that we will be acting in that capacity for the remainder of the meeting. So, Ms. Deacon?
So, I would like to go ahead and just say, I think it's terrific. We have not only a unified district, but a new name as well, and I didn't want to just clump this in with everything else. So I would like to move that we approve resolution 2011/1204, adopting a new name, the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Second?
Okay, great, historic. Motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0, and we are now officially the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Okay, for the remainder of the items that we pulled from the consent agenda, we will return at the end of this agenda. So that brings us to our conference agenda. Item E1, review of renewal of joint use agreement with the Santa Barbara Community Performing Arts Center for the Marjorie Luke Theater at Santa Barbara Junior High School. And Mr. Het, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Swawsky, were you going to introduce this?
Yeah, I want to suggest, I believe Jerry Fawcett is coming for this item and is scheduled for 7:05. If you'd like to take another item first, that may be appropriate.
Okay.
Also like to apologize for an error in the title. I left off the word youth. It's CIPEC, Santa Barbara Youth Community Performing Arts Center. So I apologize to the people from CIPEC.
Okay, thank you. I certainly think we can move ahead to item E2. I know most people are not accustomed to our being early on the agenda. So, we can look at the first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 3,000 series. We have three items here, and it probably won't take long, so we'll go right back to the earlier item as soon as we're done. Were there any questions or comments on these? Ms. Parker?
I just had one quick question on page 12 out of the total, which is AR 3516.3 on earthquake emergency procedure system.
The one that reads two of three?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's when it talks about earthquake while on the bus, I just had a quick question on what, how do we coordinate emergency procedures with Santa Barbara Transportation? Is there, are there, is that something in the MOU, or is there some sort of manual between Santa Barbara Transportation and our district since we don't do it ourselves?
You know, we're going to have, we will have to find out about that. Marlin Sumter worked on this, but I don't believe we went into looking at Santa Barbara Transportation. I do know that the response and the communication between the company and us has always been excellent and immediate, but as far as a set procedure that is with the bus, I don't believe we have one, not that I'm aware of, but.
Seems like a good thing to have, maybe, for all emergencies.
I think it's a great, yes. And then, of course, at the secondary level, we work with MTD and, you know, so for both of those agencies, that would be good. So I can see Marlin's writing that down. We'll check on that and come back to that.
I also think, if my memory serves me correctly, I think they're up for a contract extension this year, because I remember we did a three-year extension, and I'm just looking backwards, I think that's when I first got here, so I think that might have just been through 11, 12. So I'll check my records, and if that's the case, that's something we certainly could include in any kind of negotiated extension.
I do want to, in introducing this and then with the 5,000s and 6,000s that are coming, I just want to remind you that when we have replacements and revisions, the replacements, of course, are when we're, when a substantial amount of the board policy or administrative regulation is significantly different than ours. Not so much in the content, because we really check to make sure we're in line with what the board has put in place, but we're trying really hard to get in line with the way CSBA puts theirs together, so that when we get the revisions every four, or three months, four times a year, that we will then be getting into revision. So we're still in some of the replacement places, so they're not really different unless, of course, there's new language in the legislature, but that's why you see so many replacements still.
Okay. I just, I had a quick question on that one, and that is, do our bus drivers already receive training in what to do in the case of an earthquake while they're driving the bus? Or is that something that has to be added to their training?
You know, that would be something that would be, I think, a part of that discussion with our contract, because they're not our employees, of course.
Yes.
You know, they are Santa Barbara Transportation.
Yeah, and I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Okay, so we'll find that out. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Deacon?
Normally, the tsunami wouldn't have caught my attention quite as much as it does now, but we have, do we have schools that fall into this? Okay.
Yes, we do.
I thought, so my question would be, it spells out an individual within each building, so when there's portables, does that mean that the teacher in that building, I mean, have we identified who in fact is in charge of this procedure? Because most of our schools have multiple buildings.
Yes, I'm not sure where exactly you're looking, but I do know that in our school safety plans, the schools that are in those zones have to have specific language about that. Again, Marlin, will you check that to make sure that our schools have that specific language?
And they've identified.
Yes, and then they'd have to identify the building.
Identify someone who is going to be in charge of each building. Okay, thank you.
Lamont?
Super quick, page eight, one of two, extracurricular is one word. Do you see it?
Sorry.
So if you go down to the third paragraph.
One, two, three.
Extracurricular event, second line.
Yes.
Extracurricular is one word.
Oh.
Got it, okay. I was saying, actually, that's interesting, but that was something that our board added to this policy in the previous one, so it's one word. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so these will come back to us on, in, will they come back on the August?
They would typically come back in August. We always have the option of approving them at the first reading if you want, if, you know, we don't always put that language, but if that's the desire of the board, we can always do that.
Is there any desire to do that at this time?
Yes.
Good. I'm glad.
I'd like to move that we approve the replacements to the 3,000 series as revised.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Good, one less thing that needs to come back to us. Okay, we will move back then to item E1. We skipped over item E1 because we got there a bit early, just for those of you who came in. We were, wanted to make sure that people were here to address the item, so we will go back to that item now. Mr. Hetjunk?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the third five-year agreement that is being proposed for Santa Barbara Community Youth Performing Arts Center, CIPEC. With us tonight in the audience and available for questions are Jerry Fawcett, who was the principal of Santa Barbara Junior High School at the time of the first agreement, and Rod Latham, one of the primary people responsible for the formation of this group and the concept of what is currently existing at Santa Barbara Junior High School. With some of the board member questions that came in today during email, I want to mention that on item 8.2, where it talks about the deferred maintenance schedule, that did not appear in the first five-year agreement, it was added to the second five-year agreement. So we are now beyond year five, so that paragraph needs to be changed just to say 5% each year from this point forward, rather than starting back over at one for the first of this agreement. The agreement did expire, and I apologize for getting it to the board late, but we had other priorities with a lot of things happening, and the site continued to function under the existing agreement. This is a first reading as such. The staff from the school district and from CIPEC board have gone over the agreement, suggested some minor changes as outlined in the agenda item, and this is now being brought forward for board comment, questions, requested changes, review, before it is brought back for approval. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions that you may have, and between the three of us, we can try and answer them.
Okay, we will begin with board questions. Ms. Lamont?
Thank you for the information. I do have a question. I was looking at page three of this, and in section 3.1, it lists the priorities for use. And as I read on, I then got to page four, and I see that in section C, it also describes that first priority for use, unless there's a contract, is with the district. So I was a little bit confused, and I'm hoping you can clarify for me. In section 3.1, the district, not the junior high, but the district is priority D. And then in section four, it talks about the district has first priority.
Four, which item in number four?
C. On, sorry, on page four, letter C.
Oh, page four.
I'm sorry. On page four, letter C, and then I'm looking at page three, 3.1.
I believe that says if there's an emergency, that the district can bump others out of the use, and they would become priority, or if there's a conflict in scheduling, and inadvertently, two people were scheduled at the same time. I'd have to read it real quick just to make sure.
And so what's considered an emergency besides the double scheduling? Is there anything else that's considered an emergency?
An emergency would probably be something that would be coordinated with the site principal and Dr. Cash as to whether or not that truly concentrated an emergency.
Okay, all right. And then my other question is, I asked earlier, but I don't know if we got around to getting a number. I had asked how much the district spent last year in rental, or you think?
I do have that information. Last year, the district, not the junior high, the district only had one event, and that was the meeting for the superintendent search, and the total was $447.25, and I have a copy of that, if you'd like to see it on the.
So does that mean that no other sites requested to use that?
No other sites requested, as far as I know, or scheduled the use last year.
Okay.
Typically, some of that use was scheduled while other, in the past, while other theaters were under renovation, and the two that are going to be renovated in the future would be Santa Barbara High School has some further things to happen, and so does Lacumbra Junior High.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Parker?
I just had a quick question. Was Mr. Beckio part of the team that was working on this MOU?
Yes.
The only thing that I saw in going through was just that, I'm sure you caught that on page 10, the one place where it doesn't change to Santa Barbara Unified School District in the bottom at 10.2, certificate of insurance naming the, where it says Santa Barbara Elementary, that change out needs to be made.
I see that. I did not catch that yet, thank you.
There you go. And I think that that was, that was it for my questions.
Okay, Mr. Herron?
I submitted to Mr. Hetjunk a list of 10 questions, and he's in the process, along with the rest of the staff, answering them and giving me information. So rather than spend the time tonight, I think most of it, I can satisfy myself between now and the next meeting, but I will give you all copies of it, just so you see the questions I'm asking.
Okay, so these are just the copies of the questions, but these do not have the answers yet? Okay.
And he's already been gracious enough, I said he didn't need to, but he has already answered several of them.
Whenever a board member.
Great, thank you.
Whenever a board member asks a question, I typically respond to the board member and my supervisor, Mr. Smith, and Dr. Cash, and then let them forward information to the rest of the board as they feel necessary.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Deacon?
I don't want to violate the Brown Act by.
Well, you were busy because you also got some questions from me, and some of them reflect Mr. Herron's questions, and because we're all together, I would like to just mention a few of the questions I had, and you may not have the answers yet, but I did have a question about the cost of the benefits, how much the district pays for those, and I don't know if you have that yet or not.
When I went to see Elena Alvarado today, she was not in her office, and I did email Meg Jete to try and get that answer, and I haven't got it yet.
Okay.
But it'll be forthcoming.
All right, all right. Well, you know, I'd also like to say how much we appreciate the luke and what it does and what a beautiful facility it is and how great it is for the community, and I think we really treasure it as a resource. I was involved in scheduling the meeting for the superintendent's search forum, and I have to confess, I was surprised that we had to pay to use it, and $400 is, or $475 is still $475. And so I wondered, given that we are paying benefits, we're paying utilities, the custodial costs for all district-related things, property insurance, that whether the trade-off is such that perhaps we might look at ways to eliminate the cost to the district when we use it for district functions, and so that's something I would like the board to consider.
I'm sorry, Mr. Herron?
When that charge came through, I did ask about it, and it was really, it wasn't for the use of the building, it was for the audio equipment and technical advisor, I think, that had to be there for us to use the.
It was basically the theater manager and the theater tech person there to open the theater and to run whatever audiovisual support, correct, Mr. Herron, that you needed, whether it be audio or a combination of audiovisual. At larger events, you also pay for supervision of parking when they park beyond the little lot back with the basketball courts, but this was not a large event that required additional parking. And I believe then, the custodial for events like this is not accomplished, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, others, the luke hires their own custodial staff for all events. The school district custodian does not clean up after events in the luke. One of the ways, one of the things that probably could happen in the future was that if it was a district event, maybe that would be a small event, maybe that would be some sort of negotiation between Dr. Cash and the site principal on having our custodian be responsible for that event, rather than CIPEC's custodian and being charged for that. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but it's something we could explore. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but it's something we could explore. With larger events, it just may be too much for that person to schedule where they're not getting their regular duties done that they need to get done for that day. I could easily see that. It'd have to be a fairly small event. I would like to say, just for the, been associated now with CI PAC for 11 years or so, I want to say that, in my opinion, they've taken excellent care of that theater. They do all sorts of minor repairs. They keep it in great shape, and the current staff is a pleasure to work with.
I just, one comment...
Heron?
One comment in reading this, I guess it wasn't really clear to me, and one of my questions was, is this the first year of a new agreement or the second renewal of the original agreement? And you clarified that, that this is the, going on the 11th to 15th year.
Correct.
But I guess, does the agreement really say that? I guess, if, look at it from the standpoint of, does it really make it clear that this is not a new agreement, that this is an extension of, this is, we're now into this, the second renewal?
In the 1, 2, 3, in the fourth whereas of the beginning, whereas the district center previously instituted into agreement for youth programming on September 27, 2000, and January 31, 2006, for an initial term of five years and a renewal of five years.
Right. But it doesn't say... It, to me, it really doesn't say that this is a, in the continuation.
I think you could address that by just putting another whereas, that whereas the parties are, you know, desirous of extending this for another five years. I mean, we can insert that kind of language.
Because under terms of agreement number one, it sort of implies that this is a brand-new agreement. Because you got the language about for a period of five years with the rights for three additional five-year periods.
We felt that that was kind of a rolling, kind of like a rolling contract. Every five-year renewal would have a option for three additional.
To somebody not involved in this, I just wondered, you know, that's why I asked the questions. If there was a way to clarify that, I'd like to see that.
Absolutely. I mean, we've read it a few times, and other people haven't. So when you catch things like that that aren't clear, that means that we're too familiar with it, so we'll clarify.
I thought the, whereas, it's the second to the last one on the first page, whereas the district and center now wish to revise, amend, and update the agreement as provided herein. To me, that sort of addressed that, but do you think that's not clear enough?
We could add the proposed language to that whereas instead of adding an additional whereas.
I could have read this, that the amendment is, let's go on for another 15 years, 20 years. In other words, let's start with a new year one. I mean, I could have read it that way.
Okay. So maybe you can add, maybe you could add that language into that whereas. Okay. Okay. Well, this will come back to us, and we will hopefully by then have... I would hope that we would not take action on this tonight. I don't think that's anybody's intent. And this will come back to us, and we will have the answers to some of these questions so that we can have a more, a fuller discussion if we need to. I would, I know that we were sort of just about to get to this item when Ms. Fawcett and Mr. Latham walked in. Did either of you want to comment at this time? Okay. Certainly.
First of all, thank you. It's nice to see all of you, and welcome, Dr. Cash. It's great to see you here. Yes, nice job, board.
Welcome aboard.
We have a few things that we would just generally like to say, and we know that we'll get a copy of your questions, Mr. Heron and the others, so that we can address those as well. But with regard to the cost, I think we would like to make sure that you understand a few figures, and we'll be back with a little bit more of this. But just to give you something to think about, for example, the Luke donated 480 man-hours to the school during this past school year, and that amounts to about $70,000 in labor. And that includes talent shows, plays. The English, Spanish, History, and Science Department uses it, as well as the video club and other classes that come in for use. So that's one quick thing. We serve, the Luke serves 36,000 people annually in the venue, and that includes 31,000 students. Santa Barbara uses the auditorium or the theater 63% of the time.
The junior high.
The junior high school. And then 36 is for the outside. And with regard to the money issue as well, because we know that's a sensitive topic, CI PAC paid for the kiosk repair out front when we had some damage. There was also, some, and David Hat Young can help us with this too, some beam damage due to the heavy rains, and there was some water damage, and CI PAC paid for that as well. In addition to the new kiosk, which is off to the side. We are continually looking for grants, and we have probably another 20 grants in process right now. So we're always looking to try and find some way to bolster that. And there are three theater professionals in this theater to take care of it, which I think is the unique part about how the Luke operates. You want to add anything else to that?
You just, you took my list.
I took everything, I took everything away from you. So we'll be back when you choose to take a look at this again and maybe make a quick presentation to you and be available for any further questions. But thank you for your consideration.
And if we can answer any of those 10 questions now, we haven't seen that list, so we'd be happy to. Or if you want us to do it and bring it back, we'll do that.
Whatever. All right.
Yeah, I think we would probably prefer to have it addressed, you know, by our next meeting rather than try, attempt to do it here today. But I think Mr. Heron is giving you a copy there. And we look forward to having your answers as well, because I think it is good to have all the information that we need. The information you just shared now was very useful, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So item E1, we'll come back at a future meeting. Item E3, first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 5,000 series. Okay, and I don't know that we need to necessarily introduce these too much. We had the FERPA, tobacco, discipline, parental notification, and the elimination of the nondiscrimination harassment policy. But that's, it was important that we recognize that that's handled elsewhere, so we're not just getting rid of all that language. Okay, so are there any more questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Well, first of all, I had, just on the cover page, I was confused at first because there was a reference in the little blurb about AR 5144 on discipline about recess restriction. And so I was really looking at AR 5144, and then I went and looked at the CSBA sample policy, and I realized that there was recess restriction language that you could add in. And I want to thank our staff for not putting that in because it violates our wellness policy. So I just want to say, acknowledge that and acknowledge your work on that. Thank you. My one little addition is on page 32, which is BP 5131.62 on tobacco. And in the middle of the page, there's a one-sentence paragraph that says, "These prohibitions do not apply to a student's possession or use of his or her own prescription products." So I would like to add a comma there at the end. So eliminate the period, add a comma that says, "which are regulated under BP and AR 5141.21." Period. I don't want it to seem like those prescriptions are just hanging out there free for the student to...
Could you identify, could you repeat that again?
Yes, so again...
Which are regulated under...
Which are regulated under BP and AR 5141.21. Period.
Got that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I had a question. Have we had any issues, because when I read this, I was thinking, have we had any issues with students having medical marijuana cards that they then have you brought onto campus?
None that I've given my attention to.
Okay. So if they did have a prescription, would that be, would that fall under this sort of exception?
I don't know. Not really, so.
Okay.
Shouldn't. Regulated, right.
I mean, I certainly, I have certainly heard in cases here where we've had principals in the past years say that they've had students try to show their marijuana, medical marijuana cards, and they've said, "Sorry."
Sorry. Okay. I have to say, I did not know what an electronic nicotine delivery device was. Okay, so any other, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamont?
Sorry. Page 29. And next to number one, I would just change that to read college, comma, other post-secondary, comma, or military recruitment versus having all the O's. And then I had a general question, and I think I know the answer to it, but it wasn't explicitly stated. For page 40 and on, it goes on to say all of the notifications. Are those provided in, are those bilingual? There's, I mean, there's a list of them.
Yeah.
And it's not explicitly said that anywhere that, that need to be provided in English and in Spanish, but I'm just curious.
This is part of the packet that goes home, that's on our websites and all, and I would be really surprised if it wasn't in Spanish, but I...
So all of these, because these are a lot.
Most of these is bilingual, Spanish and English.
Not right now, but I would love to know of the, you said most, not all, so I would be curious if there's...
Some of them were delivered by the school site, some were delivered in that packet, and it is bilingual in the packet. I would have to verify the others that are at the school site, but I do believe they are bilingual.
Anything that does go home to parents is in both lang, English and Spanish.
Okay. All right.
Is your question whether this list, because this is a list that people get, or the actual documents?
The actual document, yeah. The actual document. I was, because there's a lot of documents, and I think I've seen some of those in Spanish. I don't know that I've seen all of them in Spanish, but I was just curious.
I would, I would think...
It's a given.
I would think any parental notification that we're required to do in law, we need to do in both languages. We'll make sure that we do that.
What we can do is we can make sure the principals get a copy of this list. You know that the ones, which are the bulk of these, go out from your office in English and Spanish. But what we should do probably is...
And there's just a handful that the sites deliver themselves, and there's some actually come from other departments as well.
So we can make sure those are in English and Spanish.
Thank you. I would appreciate that, yeah. So that's it.
Ms. Deegan?
I have a quick question. On page 38, at the bottom, it talks about students being offered the choice of serving detention on Saturday rather than after school. Do we currently offer Saturday school at all campuses?
We, last year at one point, we had some Saturday school going on at Santa Barbara High School. I, that was discontinued. I don't know what the policies are and the practice for next year. And again, this says May, just so that it's there if schools decide to go with that kind of program.
Right. The way it's written, though, it makes it sound like those are options that a student could have one or the other. And so I don't know if we wanted to add after the word Saturday if available at a school site, so that we're not...
We could do that.
Necessarily promising it's always an option.
We could do that, because that's the intent here.
Also, I had a quick question on the whole list of documents that go out. Under the when to notify category, in several places, it says annually to each high school student. I wasn't sure when that occurred, because on all the other instances, it'll say things like the beginning of the school year. So what triggers when they go out, the ones that say annually? For instance, on page 42, parental rights regarding special education at the top there, it just says annually. Down that page, there's multiple ones that say annually. So I wasn't sure when that occurred.
I'm not, I know that Carrie would know, as far as the parental rights for special education, I don't know that I could tell you exactly when, like, for instance, the uniform complaint procedures have to go out. Marlin would know that. That's the beginning of the school year. So the ones that are in the packet that comes out from our district office, that's all at the beginning of the school year. What's clear, not clear from this list, is which are those specifically? When it doesn't say beginning of the school year, that's a perfect example, that uniform complaint policy. In our case, it is in the beginning of the school year with the rest of the packet. If you'd like to...
Just to make sure we're always doing it, I think it might be good to specify a time so everyone knows when it goes out.
That language might come directly from the law that guides the, that may just say you have to do it annually.
Yeah, it looks like there's only those, just my quick review, it looks like there's only those two. Is that correct?
No, there's some, there's some others.
Okay, I just missed them then.
And I was unclear in that, too, because I thought it was sort of inconsistent. On page 40, we have this category, what I took as a category. One, it says annually.
Oh, annually, you're right.
And then it lists, and it says, okay, all of them, and there's one that says annually by February 1st. And then, so I thought the, this list seems to be still under the category of annually. So that didn't make sense to me. And then it's just saying annually. So I thought maybe there was just an inconsistency in how it was being identified.
I'm guessing it's probably what Dr. Cash said, it's probably in the language. Otherwise, it would, yeah, in the law.
Okay. So maybe we can identify those, the dates for this.
I believe if I could interject here, if it says annually, it doesn't necessarily have a specific time. Otherwise, it will say beginning of the school year, or, for example, by February 1st. It says, I'm assuming there does specify the time or date. But when it says annual, I think it's broader, meaning sometime during the year that notification has to go out. We do most of them at the beginning of the school year with the student packets.
Well, I think what we were saying is we'd like to self-impose a timeline so that it doesn't slip through the cracks, and we make sure that it's done by a certain date.
So would you, in the case of the ones that say annually on here, would you like us to add annually, like, comma or semicolon, beginning of each school year, so that on our policy, we're following the letter of the law as far as the language, and we're also indicating when?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got that, Mr. Sumter?
I think that was your intent.
That's fine. I just, Mrs. Cordial spoke what I was intending to say, that I just want to trigger to make sure we can check it off and say, yes, we've done this. But if it just says annually, then how do we know for sure it really happened?
Okay. Okay, and any further questions or comments? Okay. Do we want to act on these, or do we want these to come back to us at a future meeting?
I'm willing to go ahead and act on them. So I'll make a motion to, I'm thinking about removing the existing 5,000s, to remove the old 5,000s and replace with the new 5,000s as revised.
And I will second that.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Does anyone mind if we do not take a break at this point and move right into our E4? Okay. Let's move on then. Item E4 is the first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 6,000 series. So here we have library media centers and animals in schools. It seems like an odd combination to...
And I did have Mr. Hat Young look at animals at school, because he has overseen a lot of that with the facilities, and he checked through all that, and so did Eric. And of course Nancy Tobin and some of the librarians looked at the library media centerpiece.
Okay. So questions, Ms. Parker?
I just had one, this is going so fast. I just had one little addition to page 13, which is AR 6163.2, animals at school. There's the first paragraph, paragraph, which is use of animals for instructional purposes, and it's talking about getting written permission from a site in... There's the first paragraph, paragraph, which is use of animals for instructional purposes, and it's talking about getting written permission from a site administrator to have the animal on campus. My suggestion was to add one more sentence at the end of that paragraph, which says, "The site administrator shall also take into consideration utility costs and other facilities issues associated with an animal's presence on campus before providing permission." I was thinking particularly of rooms full of tanks plugged into our electricity.
And could you either send me that, or, okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional? Ms. Deegan?
Oh, so I get to be the one that talks about the miniature horses? Just kidding. I, yeah, I know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's new, new law.
Barns or something.
Yeah, service animals.
So I did have a question about animals that are service animals used by individuals with disabilities. What do you do if you have a child who has, say, a dog, but there are children in that class that might be allergic to a dog? What, how do you resolve that?
That's a really good question, and I, I don't have, like, a set answer. What I would say is probably on an individual basis, I mean, if you're talking elementary, you would probably make some selection on classes, you know, maybe move the allergic student to another classroom, or, you know, something like that can be worked out. When you have, you know, the older students that are moving around a lot, I think you have to kind of make other provisions, depending upon how allergic someone is, or, you know. It hasn't come up to my knowledge yet.
Okay, I was just curious, obviously, we'd have to plan for that, and I, I clipped this from the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, and then we got this, but the title, the headline is autistic boy may take dog to school. So this was really timely, because apparently that is now something that, that we need to accommodate and so. Well, I will, if there are no other additions or changes, I would also like to go ahead and move that we adopt the, the replaced selected board policies and administrative regulations in the six thousand series.
And I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, that takes us back to our consent agenda, and we will look at those that we pulled. We pulled item D two.
We did, and that's me. And I, I did ask Mrs. Sawaski for a little bit more information about the, sending the French AP teacher, and I, I don't really object per se to this, but I would just like to say at this point that when we spend, or may spend as much as nineteen hundred dollars to send one teacher to get training for what's probably a one small class, that I, I would like, before it gets to this point, to be, maybe some more evaluation at the staff level about whether that money could be spent differently, so that more teachers could benefit from that, so I, I just wanted to put that out there, I'm not opposed to this per se, but I want us to think about that.
So, did, did you get my response?
I did, and I, and I understand, there's a new AP exam, and this is training for the teacher, but, but I also had the impression that this teacher wouldn't necessarily be able to, to share that. There aren't probably a whole lot of French AP classes.
There is one at Santa Barbara High School, and the way the AP exams, without going into a lot of detail, maybe some of you know this, that they are revised on a regular basis, a timeline, and when the new exam comes out, it's really important for the teachers to go. Now, they can share some of the curricular focus, some of the differences in the exam, but the, the advantage of going to the training, I mean, that piece is really important. They spend a lot of the time there reworking their syllabus and making sure that everything's aligned with that. There are actually different ways in which you can build that course, and it's not the same as our regular classes, and they give examples of that, and then they help the teachers actually build that. So the experience itself is extremely valuable, it is also expensive. And next year, you'll be seeing a lot of biology teachers going, because that's a big one of our AP classes, many students, many teachers, you know, teach that. That is, that will be the new test next year. There's a timeline and sequence for that. So I understand with the AP French, because there's probably one class, and it is a large expense.
But it is very important.
Okay, well, I will move to go ahead and approve D two for staff travel, out-of-state travel and/or expenses.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, our next item was item D nine, which we have already taken action on, so that takes us to item D thirteen.
And that was me.
Okay.
Let me just pull up my suggestions on this one. I pulled that for a couple of reasons. One was to make some suggested revisions in the successful candidates section. When, this looks like the job description, before the revisions, it looks like the job description then went out before we hired Ms. Weiss. And so it was, it was kind of created at that point, and one of the things that we put in the job description at that point was this registered membership in the American Dietetic Association, i.e. registered dietitian. But when we were actually in the process of hiring, and Ms. Sawaski, I can't remember if you were in on that or not, but our, our consultant said actually, in your case, you will be better off with somebody with chef experience than an RD. And I think that she was right. So, and I looked around at what other districts do and what colleges are doing, and it's actually quite rare to have this as part of the employment standards, successful candidate. So my first suggestion is that we simply eliminate that line, registered membership in the American Dietetic Association, i.e. registered dietitian. And then I also wanted to suggest, and this I essentially lifted off of a, another district's job description, uniting the two separate sentences under successful candidates, so that it reads, let's see if I wrote up the whole thing. Oh, I said, see email language, Mr. Smith. Hold on, let me see if I can pull that up. Okay, so it would say instead, "Successful candidates will have a four-year degree in a related field with an emphasis in dietetics, institutional food management, hotel and restaurant management, business administration, nutrition, or closely related field, plus," so comma, "then plus five years of responsible management level experience coordinating a comprehensive food service program, comma, preferably in a public educational agency, comma, or an equivalent combination of education and experience." And that was fairly typical for what I saw. And then, so those are my suggested revisions of language. I did ask Mr. Smith if he could maybe have some language to suggest in the main section, because one of the things that I noticed was that there wasn't language around serving our students with special diet needs. And I don't know if you have any suggested language on that.
Yeah, I do. Excuse me, I, I was able to craft a bullet, and just like you, I had to lift it from another organization. But interestingly enough, when you do a survey of director of child nutrition or food service job descriptions, and you kind of do a search and start looking at them, very few of them have any reference to, you know, accommodating students with special dietary needs, and that just shows you it's an evolving job description, and we're kind of at the forefront of it. So I was able to find something that I tweaked a little bit, I wanted to, for your consideration, have you look at this language. "Work with district health professionals to provide nutrition information or appropriate substitutions for students with special dietary needs."
Great, and where would you suggest that we insert that, just like as a last bullet?
Well, actually, if you look at, when I look at how it's structured, there's a number of bullets about, on page three of five, where it starts with works. I'm not sure it's consistent with, you know, that particular aspect of the job, but none of those bullets seem to be ordered in any kind of sequence. I mean, it doesn't deal with, you know, all catering in one area, or all, you know, kitchen management in one area. But if we look at, you know, starting it with works, that's where I think it would probably be appropriate.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're talking about under other duties and responsibilities, or?
No, a separate bullet.
In the list.
In the list of bullets.
Oh, in, in here?
Yeah, and I would just add another bullet.
In there someplace.
Exactly, and you can see where there's a number of them that starts with works, and I would just say work or works with, because that's how it leads in.
Could you read the bullet again that you found?
I guess it should say works, not work, now that I'm looking at the job description. "Works with district health professionals," and the reason I broaden that, because that could be nurses or health assistants, "to provide nutrition information," which is carb counts and things like that, "or in the event that the food is allergenic or whatever, "or appropriate substitutions for students with special dietary needs."
That sounds good to me.
I like the bullet, I would, I would actually like to see it earlier in the list.
Okay.
And I was thinking maybe somewhere in the area where it says promotes healthy nutritional guidelines for students, as well as other community-based programs and committees.
Where is that?
That's on, I'm sorry, on the page two of five, it's about.
Oh, I see, it's one of the new underlined sections, so we put it right either before or after promotes?
Yeah, I, somewhere in that area, I thought.
Probably right after promotes is what I'm thinking. Okay, that works. Oh, nobody got my joke.
Okay, Ms., I'm sorry.
Given that we're going with works, I would like to suggest that in all of these bullet points, we change the verb structure, so it's not manage, but manages, supports.
Sure, okay.
So it's just consistent all the way through. On that, that last bullet point, is there some, there's some federal guidelines, correct, that we need to comply with, that support, that, that provide the nutritional content of meals? Do we want to, in the bullet point that you're adding, do we want to say that?
I, I think the regulatory aspects of that are already addressed elsewhere.
Okay.
This is kind of a special circumstance, I mean, it's really not special, because it probably occurs in all districts, it's just a greater awareness issue.
And we, we know we have some constituents that are really concerned about doing this, thank you.
I'd like to move that we.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamone had a comment real quick before we make our motion.
So actually, my comment was along the line of what Ms. Parker said, and I had actually found something in our own board policy that talked about what the coordinator or director shall do. But what I realized is when I read our board policy on nutrition program compliance, and then I read the job description, there were some things that were congruent and other things that were not so congruent and left some confusion, so I would actually like to see, under other duties and responsibilities, helps develop and abide by board policies around nutrition program compliance, just very general, because then I think we're covered in that area.
Okay, let me get that again, the language was.
A board.
Helps.
Helps develop and comply with nutrition, board policy on nutrition program compliance.
Maybe board policies, just in case there's one.
Yeah.
On nutritional compliance.
Okay, okay, now? Oh, Miss, I'm sorry, Mr. Heron. Now? Not quite yet.
In the cover letter, part of this is an increase of twenty-two thousand plus dollars in compensation, and it says it's a result of a significant discrepancy. Guess my question is, what is the effective date of this change, this new salary?
It would be effective when you approve it.
It's not retroactive.
It's not retroactive.
Even though it's significant.
It's significant, because if you look at the management salary schedule, you'll see that she's the only director that's not paged at range twenty-three. We're not sure how that actually occurred, but it's about twenty thousand dollars less than any other director in the district, so it's an equity issue.
But it's an equity issue going forward, not.
That's correct, it would not be retroactive.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready now, Ms. Parker.
Can I move then, that we approved the revised job description and salary placement for director of child nutrition, including any changes that we've made at this meeting?
I'll second, and I'll just ask at the top of the director description, we moved that apostrophe in districts in the first line, because now we are just one district.
Got it.
Okay, so you second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Item D fifteen.
That was me again.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was, Mr. Heron.
No, and I, I pulled this one just because I'm concerned, I'm concerned at the amount of money that we've spent for the move of the community academy from this downtown location to Locombra Junior High School. And I want to be careful about going forward with it. And I, I think that only Mrs. Cordera was on the board when this happened back in two thousand and seven with, with me, and actually, Mrs. Cordera, you weren't even at the meeting when the move happened. But, so just for a little bit of background, in the early two thousands, obviously, this was supposed to turn into a, an elementary school. And the community academy was going to be a full-size elementary school at this downtown location. In the early two thousands, it had about three hundred students, and they wanted to expand to four hundred and twenty. This site had two hundred and fifty of their students, and they had fifth and sixth graders elsewhere. The board at that time decided that instead of capping it to fifty so it could stay downtown, that they wanted to go ahead and allow them to expand to four twenty. In two thousand and seven, the board was told that it was going to cost four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars with, to move these students over to, to Locombra, and it would serve, with minor modifications, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, that would be able to serve four hundred and twenty students. The community academy actually has never grown, it stayed at about three hundred. But we've, and we've spent, thank you, Mr. Hentjank, he sent me the list of what was spent on the move. We spent one point one million so far on that move, for them to have fifty extra students than they could have capacity here for. And now it turns out that with those three hundred students, they actually need a restroom to the tune of over six hundred thousand dollars. And it really, it troubles me that we're spending that much money for them to have so few more students, that we lost a downtown school in the process. But I do trust that the site administrator is correct, that really it was a miscalculation, that it was not, that there's not enough restroom capacity even for their fewer than four hundred and twenty students. But I do think that as a board going forward, if they ever were to go up to four hundred and twenty, we would probably be having more portables having to be brought on. There isn't capacity for them to actually go to four twenty, that they would probably need even more restroom space if they were to go to four twenty. So I wanted to pull this, to put on our radar that we talk about capping the school at its current level, in the low, it's at about three hundred, I believe, at this point, so that this kind of thing doesn't keep coming back to us, and there's not a hope in the future that they're going to grow to four twenty, and then we have to spend more and more on facilities there. So I just wanted to have that on the radar on this one.
Thank you, I, I wanted to just comment, just on one part of that, and, and you're right, the cost has dramatically exceeded what our original expectations were. But I do want to say that the move was not just to accommodate additional students, it was also to unify the school, so that you did not have the lower grades on one location and the upper grades on another location. So that was, I would, I think as much of a factor in the decision as the concept of this school growing. But be that as it may, we still have this issue of dramatically increased costs.
But I, and this is where I would chime in, that if it had been capped at two fifty, they could have been unified here. So.
If we had built out.
No, no, they had two hundred and fifty, they had two hundred and fifty here. So, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty on this one, I think that this was a really expensive move. I think that this was a really expensive move and maybe La Cuesta would have been better served moving into the La Cumbre side and less expensively. But as it stands, I just want to be sure that this kind of thing isn't coming back in the future, that this is maybe the last.
Do you want to address the costs?
I just wanted to say that the current restroom being proposed is being sized to accommodate an additional two portables' worth of students. In the master plan, we had four portables laid out in the master plan for that site, for them to be able to grow a little bit. So, if the board is going to consider capping that enrollment at that site, we may want to look at how many fixtures we are providing, because we are providing for two additional classrooms more than what they currently have access to.
So, I'm sorry, didn't, so part of the need for the, the additional restroom is the expectation of growth?
No, the need, I think, part of the need is the current situation where the academy students are using a small restroom at the front of what I would call the multipurpose room. There are other restrooms on campus, but when they moved over there, it was decided that it was best for them not to share. So, we did not modify any of the existing restrooms to accommodate with smaller fixtures for elementary types. I don't know if that, as far as I know, that situation has changed, where it's still a philosophy that it's better not to mix the restroom use for, for the junior high and the elementary, both on that campus. And so, without the sharing of restrooms, this was the next best alternative. We did provide portable restrooms for a period of time, but students would rather line up and wait to use the existing restrooms than the portable restrooms. And it is a situation that has come before the board before. And this, that's why this was placed on the bond fund list when we originally went out for the bond issue.
Okay. Real quick, and then, then Ms. Deacon and Mr. Heron. But I think I understood you to say that if we were to cap the school at its current capacity, we would perhaps be able to scale back.
Slightly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Deacon?
Well, my question, because this is a permanent building, was at some point, say, La Cumbre grew and the academy shrunk, would it be situated in such a way that, that the junior high could use it, if we're not sharing?
Currently, we have two portables at that site. And I can bring up the site plan if you'd like to see it. Two, the, what I would call west of those two portables is where we planned the restroom building. And then, two more portable classrooms for the master plan in the future beyond that, towards the apartments on, what's the name of the exit right there? Rain dead.
Las Pecitas?
Yes, Las Pecitas. So, so we're moving towards Las Pecitas.
And the junior high students, I know they go out and they use the field right there, so they do have some travel and.
There, there is a restroom on the field that is basically used for after-school programs, kind of similar to the one at Santa Barbara Junior High that the city built prior to my time being there. That's basically only used for after-school, city use, as they schedule that joint-use field. As far as I know, the La Cumbre students that are out use the restrooms in the PE portion of the building while they're out in that area, or the other restrooms in the main building.
Okay. So, it's not really situated in a way that would make it useful for the junior high?
No.
Okay, thanks.
And they're not the right size for the junior high. I was very thankful to see this. You had very kindly talked about portable restrooms. I think what you meant was porta-potties.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not the portable building on the.
Yeah, yeah. There's a difference between a portable restroom and a porta-potty.
Porta-potties would be the correct term.
Yes. And to see those kindergarten kids try to use those was very eye-opening during my campaign, as you well know. So, I'm very happy to see we finally are going to solve the restroom problem. The way it's been is untenable. Thank you.
Ms. Sawaski?
I was going to say, there, there are a lot of issues also surrounding this, not only the size and the little kids afraid, you know, to use the other ones. But when the primary students who are on the lower level have to use the restroom, like during class, they have to go outside and around. There's no supervision for them to go, I mean, we're talking kindergarten students, and go out to these very small ones that are part of the multipurpose room. And then, those are also the ones that students have to use during their recess time. So, it, then, you have to have another person stationed there. And so, the supervision piece and the cost of having another supervisor out there is, is a difference as well. The older kids are using the upstairs bathrooms, because it's third, third through sixth grade. So, they're using those and sharing those. No?
No, I don't think they share. They have their own bathrooms upstairs.
They have their own bathrooms, but there's an agreement between the principals that those kids can kind of co-mingle a bit, because they, you know, they're very close. And they're the older kids. And that's worked out just fine. But we're talking mostly for the primary and then for outside.
And even the staff currently have to walk halfway across campus to use a restroom.
There is a unisex staff stall in each one of these three restrooms.
Great. Well, putting that on a future agenda items list, I'm going to go ahead now and move to approve item D fifteen.
And I will happily second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. We had, oh, that was the end of our pulled items, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have coming events. I know that we are currently in the process of trying to schedule a board workshop with the new superintendent to focus on a variety of issues, really. And we will be determining that very soon. Are there any additional coming events that anyone needs to mention? We will not be meeting, for the second meeting in July. As we usually do, we take that meeting off during the summer. So, our next scheduled meeting will be August ninth. Ms. Parker, you mentioned this, this previous item as a future board, for a future board agenda. Are there any other agenda items that people wanted to bring forward?
Oh, I just, I think I wanted to ask you about Mr. Heron and Mrs. Deacon getting paid for August. If there's been any movement on when that resolution needs to come forward.
I have not gotten any additional information. We, I don't know if the two of you were aware that this was even going on, but we, we were, we were going to have it on this agenda. And then, we erroneously believed that the, the, sort of.
The board bylaw.
By, that the board bylaws allowed us, that only referred to missing a, a regular meeting. And since you were missing a special meeting, that your stipend would not be done. Then we found out that in fact, it addresses all meetings at sort of a pro-rata amount. So, but by that time, we had missed the agenda, the agenda deadline. So.
It's, it's a simple fix. It's just a resolution.
Yes, but it'll have to come forward at.
The August meeting?
At the August meeting, if that's okay with the two of you.
I read the board policies and I, I don't see how being on vacation qualifies, so.
It, it's not about being on vacation. It's if you miss it for factors outside of your control. And we called a meeting when you guys had already left.
I don't think it says that, but okay. It very clearly says if, if you're out of town on business, on school district business or illness, and I, I wasn't sick. I didn't see any way, and that didn't bother me, but I was looked, but it, I didn't see any way, so it doesn't bother me.
Because this is what I, what I was looking at to see if we could add. And that was, it's a hardship deemed acceptable by the board. And that is, that was the language. And that's the language that's been used in the past. Because in the previous cases, we have absolutely had board members say, you know, "You've scheduled a meeting when I was out of town and there was no way I could participate." So, I personally think you guys should not miss out on it.
Well, and, and one thing going forward, I mean, now that we've watched your example of participating remotely, I think that, you know, that's something, I was under the impression it was that special meetings didn't count. And so, we could make the effort to be, to actually participate when we're away, if we, if we could. I actually had a couple of things I wanted to add.
For future board agenda?
Future agenda items. I would like to propose to the board that we take up the idea of establishing a sustainability council that would be patterned after the wellness council. I know there are a lot of people in the community and parents that would be interested in weighing into green, sustainable issues related to, to school buildings, school practices. And so, that's something that I would like us to discuss about possibly establishing something like that. I had a question about the response to the grand jury reports, because I believe that we are required to respond to those. And I just wanted to make sure that something's in the work on that. Good, great.
You'll get a copy of that soon. We just, Marlon and I reviewed it today.
Good, great. And then, because our elementary head librarian retired, I wasn't sure what the plan was in terms of possibly restructuring that, that job.
Actually, what we're going to do, she has been planning this for a while, and she's been working with her library techs. And she will be coming back for, it, it ends up to be two to three days a week. There's a certain amount of money as you retire that you can make, you know, within the, she's a pers, public employee, employee person. So, she's going to remain doing the parts of the job that require a librarian, like ordering the books. And there are certain things that she can only do in that position. And then, the library techs have been trained very well, was, which was her original job, you know, to train them. And then, Marina in our curriculum office is going to, is taking over the textbook part of the distribution of the instructional materials. And as you might recall, we put that into our Destiny program, so it's all online now. And there, the inventory is kept. And Nancy trained everyone to do that last year. She's now training Marina. And Marina will then work with the library techs to keep track of all the textbooks and all. I see, Mrs. Parker, you have a question about that.
I'm leaning you're going, actually, I want to be careful. We don't get too much information right now. But are you going to give that in a board brief or is it going to be in a board meeting?
I can. It wasn't planned to be in a board meeting. Would you like to have that?
I think it would be great to have it in a board brief.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, I just want to remind us that we had also, at our previous meeting, asked for a review of the expulsion process, to have that come forward on a future agenda as well. Ms. Heron?
Just to put it on record again, I think I'd like to see a review of the study of doing our TV broadcasts in Spanish.
Yes, we keep, we keep asking for that.
Well, we haven't, we asked for it once officially. So, I might just put it back on the schedule. The other is, is I'd like Dr. Cash to be aware or look into, there's apparently a debate over, in the nutrition. I didn't want to bring it up in the discussion about the position. But there's a debate as to how much notification on carbs and the diet and the menus. Just be aware of that and look into it and see what the issues are and who's involved. There's nurses, there's, there's a lot of people involved in that topic. If you could just look into it and be aware of it and, if appropriate, get back to us at some time.
Is that something we could maybe get a report on in the, a board brief?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Because that, that is something that I think we've all been probably contacted about. Ms. Parker?
Mine is, my last thing is just about future agenda items in general. Until about, I don't know, eighteen months ago, two years ago, the board actually always got the list of future agenda items. So, we knew that the, that staff were working on things. And that sort of disappeared from the board brief. And I think I would like to request that the future agenda items come, come back.
I would, I, yes, I agree.
So that we know that they're on staff regard.
Do you also get?
It was listed in the board brief.
They were, it listed at the end of the board brief. It would give future agenda items. And it would say, like, which meeting they were going to be addressing.
It's that actual document that I know still exists, but we're just not getting it anymore.
And did you also have, like, future board brief items? Because sometimes when you've requested one, we have to wait for it. Okay, just future board.
Yeah. Ms. Moon?
And in light of all the nutrition conversation that we've had today, I would like to see a discussion on universal breakfast brought up. I don't know if it needs to happen first with the staff and it becomes a report, but it was brought up, so.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? We've got a lot of items, so I think that's a, okay. Well, then, I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. Look, we are early. Okay, I will adjourn the meeting.